The twelfth day of the Fifth Clerk Session of the twenty eighth. Will now come to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer.
Senator Ali. Senator Aritas. Senator Figuer. Senator Koolen. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Coleman.
Aye byye.
Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Med. Senator Panuelo. Senator Perman. Senator Romolo. Senator Orsma. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, twelve members are present.
We have quorum to transact business this morning for Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you, all honorable members, as well as our staff, and all those who are observing from our gallery. Again, I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
It's moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the Journal. Those in favor, say yes. Abols, nay. Motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, item five, we have receipt of Presidential Communications Numbers Twenty dash three hundred thirty-two through twenty dash three hundred thirty-four.
Assign those, Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court Communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Continue.
Item seven, Member Communications, none. Item eight, Departmental Communications, there are also none. Item nine, Agency or...
Short recess, Speaker. Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, continue.
Speaker, point of privilege.
Go ahead, Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you and members. I wish to recognize an individual who is in the gallery observing our this morning, and I ask that we give him a round of applause. The individual in the gallery this morning is Mr. Asteria Tagesi, who is the Vice President of Governmental Affairs at Bank of Guam, and he's also the Chairman of the JCRP. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Romolo, for recognizing very distinguished guests of ours this morning.
Point of privilege, Speaker.
Yes, quiet, Chairman Perman.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. Good morning to you, members, and all that are observing our session this morning. Mrs. Speaker, I have two constituents that is also attending our session this morning. Like to introduce them. One is Mr. Perez Hamaritz, Councilman of Soques, and Mr. Tassiano Helken, a really good farmer and fisherman. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Perman. Those two gentlemen are indeed welcome, as always, to observe our session. Any other point of privilege?
Short recesses, please.
Short recesses, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Item nine, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications, none.
Continue.
Item ten, State Communications, none. Item eleven, State Supreme Court Communications, there are also none. Item twelve, Municipal or Town Communications, none. Item thirteen, Foreign Government Communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay. Order of the day, item fourteen, Standing Committee Reports, first report, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, the first report is Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash eighty-nine on Functional Resolution Number Twenty dash one twenty-seven from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs for adoption.
So move for its adoption, Mrs. Speaker. Short recess, Chief Clerk. Congress is back in session. It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash eighty-nine. What is it about, Chief Clerk?
It's accepting a grant in the amount of nine, nine hundred fifty thousand, six hundred twenty-four to fund the SPF or BFS project.
Okay, discussion. Questions being called for? If there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote those in favor of the adoption of Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash eighty-nine, say yes. Abols, nay. Motion carried. Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash eighty-nine is adopted by Congress. Next report.
Mrs. Speaker, we have Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash ninety on Functional Resolution Number Twenty dash one twenty-nine from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs for adoption.
Chairman.
So move for its adoption, Twenty dash ninety.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash ninety. Discussion. Discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote those in favor of the adoption of Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash ninety, say yes. Abols, nay. Motion carried. Standing Committee Report Twenty dash ninety is adopted by Congress. Next report, Chief Clerk.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, we have Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash ninety-one on Functional Resolution Number Twenty dash one thirty from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs for adoption.
Chairman Perman.
So move for its adoption, Twenty dash ninety-one.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Standing Committee Report Twenty dash ninety-one. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote those in favor of the adoption of Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash ninety-one, say yes. Abols, no. Motion carried. Standing Committee Report Twenty dash ninety-one is adopted by Congress.
Short recess, Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. And next report.
Mrs. Speaker, the next report is Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash ninety-two regarding Functional Resolution Number Twenty dash one thirty-one, again, from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs for adoption.
So move for its adoption, Twenty dash ninety-two.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash ninety-two. Discussion. If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote those in favor of the adoption of Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash ninety-two, say yes. Abols, no. Motion carried. Standing Committee Report Number Twenty dash ninety-two is adopted by Congress. Next report, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Wally.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we go down to the Bill Calendar.
If there is no objection, we will now go down to the Appeal Calendar.
What is this, Mr. Speaker?
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Session, we're still, we're now on the Appeal Calendar. First bill. Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash two hundred fifty C D one for a second reading. CB number twenty dash two fifty C D one. It's a bill for an act directing the President of the Federated States of Micronesia or his designee that in accordance with Section Two of Article fourteen of the Constitution of the Federated States of Micronesia, that at least every ten years, the question, shall there be a convention to revise or amend the Constitution, be submitted to the people in a general election? Such a question shall be submitted to the people in the general election to be held on March two thousand twenty-one, as was submitted in two thousand one, and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Romolo.
Move for adoption of the said bill.
So it's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number twenty dash two fifty C D one. Discussion. Short recess. Okay. Congress is back in session. Any discussion on the bill? If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chairman Koolen will cast the vote for check.
State of check, Chairman Koolen. State of Pompeii, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye byye.
State of Kosai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsma.
Milla, Uzata, nay. Pitching bomb bang.
Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
Still works. Okay. For a reason, CB number twenty dash two fifty C D one has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash one seventy-seven for a second reading. CB number twenty dash one seventy-seven is a bill for an act to amend Public Law Number nineteen dash eighty-nine, as amended by Public Laws Numbers nineteen dash ninety-four, nineteen dash one twenty-seven, nineteen dash one fifty-one, nineteen dash one fifty-nine, twenty dash six, and twenty dash thirty-two, by amending Section Six thereof to change the last date of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs in each of the states and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
So move.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number twenty dash one seventy-seven. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of check, Chairman Koolen. State of Pompeii, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye byye.
State of Kosai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsma. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
For a reason, CB number twenty dash one seventy-seven has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next. State of point, Chairman Orsma.
Now that we have transacted on seven and final reading, and when we approach hopefully today, transmitted the Act of Congress, it's now to indicate for even as friends notice to cross and it's already going to be extended.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash one one eight for a second reading from your Committee on Ways and Means. CB number twenty dash one hundred eighteen is a bill for an act to further amend Title fifty-five of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, as annotated, as amended, by inserting a new Section twelve oh nine A to vest all powers of the FSM Trust Fund Board of Directors in the President of the Federated States of Micronesia, while the Board of the FSM Trust Fund is not constituted, subject to certain conditions and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
I so move, I move for the passage of the said bill on second and final reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number twenty dash one eighteen, one one eight. Discussion.
Speaker.
Chairman Figuer.
I have a proposed floor amendment. May I ask the Chief Clerk to read? It's been printed and disputed unless you all want to just insert. It's really a clean-up amendment on the bill style.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, read the offer for amendment to CB twenty dash one one eight by Chairman Figuer.
Mrs. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to CB number twenty dash one one eight offered by Chairman Figuer. Item one of this amendment on page one, line ten. He shall cause and insert the President shall require in lieu thereof. I'm sorry. Item two of this amendment on page one, line fourteen. Delete section and insert chapter in lieu thereof. Item three of the amendment on page one, line fifteen. Delete he, the word he, and insert the administrator in lieu thereof. Item four on page one, line seventeen. Delete this section and insert Section twelve oh nine and this section in lieu thereof.
Okay, there you have it.
I so move, Mr. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that the offer for amendment to CB twenty dash one one eight by Chairman Figuer be adopted before discussion. Floor Leader Harper.
Speaker, I move to suspend any rules that we impede our action on the amendment.
It's moved and seconded that the relevant rules, specifically the rules prohibiting substantive amendment on second and final reading, be suspended. Those in favor, say yes. Abols, nay. Motion carried. The relevant rules are now suspended. Discussion on the offer for amendment.
Speaker.
Chairman Figuer.
The purpose of the amendment is to clarify any potential ambiguity in the use of pronunciations, or pronouns, and correct cross-reference to the correct chapter and sections.
Okay. It's just a cleanup job amendment. Thank you, Chairman Figuer, for doing that. Any further discussion?
Speaker.
Yes, for Leader Harper.
Just a minor question. On item one, the word President is in there, and item three, the word Administrator is in there. So may I just note the difference? How long we don't use President on line item two or Administrator on item one?
Chairman Figuer.
Yeah, that's just changing the word because it may not be the President at all the time. So he may refer to a person who is the Administrator of the fund. So it's just a matter of title and person in charge.
For Leader. Okay.
Yes, Speaker.
Any further discussion on the offer for amendment? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote on the offer for amendment. Those in favor, I would say yes. Abols, nay. Motion carried. The offer for amendment by Chairman Figuer is adopted. We now have C D one. Okay, any further discussion on C D one? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of check, Chairman Koolen.
Yes.
State of Pompeii, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye byye.
State of Kosai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsma.
I yield the floor to Chairman Figuer.
Chairman Figuer. Mrs. Speaker, three states voted in favor. Kosai absent or excused.
For that reason, CB number twenty dash one one eight, C D one, has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash one twenty-seven for second reading from your Committee on Ways and Means. CR number, I mean, CB number twenty dash one twenty-seven, C D one. It's a bill for an act to further amend Section twelve oh eight of Title fifty-five of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, as annotated, as enacted by Public Law Number ten dash one fifty and as amended by Public Law Number eighteen dash seventy-four, to change the composition of the Board of Trustees of the FSM Trust Fund and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number twenty dash one twenty-seven. Discussion. Discussion. Chairman Orsma.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I just wonder why, why the title, and I should have asked this when we were deliberating on this, on this set of bills. Why is it changing the composition of the Board of Trustees? How are the composition being changed? Is it increasing the numbers or decreasing? Or how is the, how is the bill changing the composition?
Okay, Chairman Figuer. Care to enlighten our colleague?
Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figuer.
I move that we defer action on Congress Bill one twenty-seven to the end of the bill calendar.
It's moved and seconded that we defer action on CP twenty dash one one, one, two seven, to the end of the bill calendar. Those in favor, say yes. Abols, no. Motion carried. Said bill is now deferred to the end of the bill calendar. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash one thirty for second reading from your Committee on Ways and Means. CB number twenty dash one thirty is a bill for an act to amend Section Three of Public Law Number fifteen dash seventy to change the qualification requirements for the two representatives for the FSM government to the Joint Trust Fund Committee and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number twenty dash one three zero. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of check, Chairman Koolen.
Yes.
State of Pompeii, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye byye.
State of Kosai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsma. Mrs. Speaker, three states voted for.
Okay.
State of Kosai absent.
For that reason, CP number twenty dash one thirty has passed Congress on second and final reading.
Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. For the record, yes, CP number twenty dash one thirty has passed Congress on second and final reading. So, next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number twenty dash two oh two for a second reading from your Committee on R and D. CP number twenty dash two hundred two. It's a bill for an act to further amend Title four to one of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, as annotated and as amended, by amending Sections one oh three, one oh seven, one zero zero nine, one zero eleven, one zero thirteen, one zero fourteen, one zero twenty, one zero twenty-two, one zero twenty-four, one zero twenty-five, one zero twenty-six, one zero twenty-seven, one zero twenty-eight, and one zero thirty thereof, to provide for the establishment of the competent authority and for other purposes.
Chairman Panuelo.
Yes, Speaker, I so move for the passage of CB number twenty dash two oh two, C D one, on second reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number twenty dash two zero two. Discussion. Any discussion? None, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations.
State of check, Chairman Koolen.
Yes.
State of Pompeii, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye byye.
State of Kosai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsma.
I yield the floor to Chairman Figuer.
Chairman Figuer. Mrs. Speaker, three states voted in favor. Kosai stayed absent.
CP number twenty dash two oh two has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number twenty dash two hundred forty-nine, C D one, for a second reading. CP number twenty dash two forty-nine, C D one. It's a bill for an act to appropriate the sum of fourteen million dollars from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand nineteen, for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other projects and programs in the states of Yap, Kosai, Pompeii, and Chuk, and for other purposes.
You want to defer this?
Speaker. Differ to the end of the bill calendar.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figuer, you have the floor.
I believe, Mr. Speaker, the main motion is to defer the bill to the end of the calendar.
Okay. It was seconded. So there's no objection. The bill twenty dash two forty-nine is moved to the, deferred to the end of the bill calendar. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Speaker, Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Koolen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we go down to resolution calendar.
It's moved and seconded that we go down to the resolution calendar. We have plenty to do there. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Yes. Abols, nay. Motion carried. We're now on the bill calendar. First bill, Chief Clerk.
Speaker.
I mean, first resolution.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Koolen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move to withdraw. Resolution twenty dash one twenty.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. This is back in session. Chairman Koolen.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move that withdraw CR twenty dash one two zero under order of business for today.
It's moved and seconded that Resolution Number twenty dash one two zero be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Abols, nay. Motion carried. Resolution twenty dash one two zero is now placed, withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Chairman Koolen.
Move for the adoption of the said resolution.
And second, it's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution Number twenty dash one two zero. That's nomination resolution.
Speaker.
Chief Clerk, read the title.
Speaker. I presume relevant rules are still suspended.
Yes, let the record reflect that relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Read the title.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, functional resolution number twenty dash one twenty. It's a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Cholden J. Johnny Boye to serve as a member of the Telecommunication Regulation Authority of the Federated States of Micronesia.
Okay, any discussion?
Speaker. Just a minor question. I heard Chief Clerk saying Regulation Authority. Should it be regulation or regulatory?
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. The motion to adopt has been seconded, so we're in discussion. Any further discussion on the motion for adoption? If none, this is a nomination to require 10 votes by secret ballot. Chief Clerk, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, announce the result.
Mr. Speaker, nine members voted in favor, two against.
For that reason, Resolution Number 20-120 does not pass, is not adopted by Congress. The nomination is not confirmed.
Short recess.
Short recess, Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
Now, I've.
Congress is back in session. Chairman Kooland, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move to reconsider the said bill, 20-120. So move, Mr. Speaker.
It's moved that we reconsider our action on Resolution Number 20-120. That's not subject to debate. So we will go through the same voting as we did by secret ballot. Then votes are required to be able to reconsider.
Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
Speaker.
Pass out the ballots.
Speaker.
Congress is back in session.
Short recess, Speaker.
Chief Clerk, announce the results.
Mr. Speaker, for reconsideration, nine members voted for, two against.
For that reason, the reconsideration is not passed. So that's set for Resolution Number 20-120. Okay, next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Speaker, I move that we go back to the bill calendar.
It's moved and seconded that we go back to the bill calendar. There's no objection. We will now go back to the bill calendar.
Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're now on the bill calendar. Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to withdraw Congress Bill 20-254 from your Committee on Ways and Means and put on the bill calendar for action.
Seconded, it's moved and seconded that CB number 20-254 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Both no. Motion carried. CB number 20-254 is withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that Congress pass on first reading Congress Bill Number 20-254.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading. CB number 20-254. Read the title, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, CB number 20-254 is a bill for an act to remember the sections created by Public Law Number 20-130 and to clarify the source of the funds deposited into the ESM Trust Fund pursuant to the new section of Title 54 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated and as amended and for other purposes.
Okay, discussion, any discussion? This is the correction needed for the bill that we, act that we over, overwrote?
Yes.
Yes, okay. There's no.
Yeah, Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Orismal.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I just wish to, I don't see section 321 in this bill. So may I know that reference to 321? What tax are we talking about when we talk about 321?
Okay, Chairman Figueroa.
Short recess. I don't want to say something on record that they should have.
Okay, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. We're still on discussion of the bill 254. If no further discussion, there's no objection. Debate is closed. So let's forward by roll call of members, first reading.
Senator Alik, Senator Aritos, Senator Figueroa, Senator Kooland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned. Senator Panwello.
Am I?
Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orismal, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina. Mr. Speaker, ten members voted for.
For that reason, CB number 20-254 has passed Congress on first reading. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Let's just have, for the record, Senator Ned's vote on the bill.
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that it's four this year. So the bill, CB number 20-254, has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 20-127 for second reading.
It's moved, I mean.
Short recess. Move for the passage of Congress Bill 20-247.
Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figueroa, restate your motion.
Move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading. CB number 20-127, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still, we're now in discussion of CB number 20-127. Chairman Orismal.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I have an oral amendment that I wish to make on the bill.
Go ahead.
Page one in the title, line three, after the word "composition," insert, insert the phrase "and manner of appointment and recall." So move.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments by Chairman Orismal be adopted. The relevant rules, specifically the one on prohibition of substantive amendments on final reading are still suspended up to this point. So discussion on the offered oral amendments. If none, there's no objection. Let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offered oral amendments by Chairman Orismal to CB 20-127, say yes. Both no. Motion carried. The offered oral amendments are adopted. We now have CD1. Any further discussion on CD1? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's forward by roll call of delegations.
State of Chuk, Chairman Kooland.
Yes.
State of Ponte, Chairman Panwello. State of Cuxai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orismal.
I yield the floor to Chairman Figueroa.
Chairman Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, three states voted for. Cuxai stayed absent.
For that reason, CB number 20-127 has passed Congress on second and final reading. CD1 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 20-249, CD1, for second reading.
Okay, Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passage of the bill.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading. CB number 20-249, CD1.
Speaker.
Discussion. Yes, Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If there may be no objection, I move to defer this bill to next meeting day of this session.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Let the record reflect that Senator Aritos is in attendance now. Okay, there is a motion. Those in favor of deferring CB 20-249, CD1 to the next session day of this Congress session, say yes. Both nay. Motion carried. CB number 20-249, CD1 is deferred to the next session day.
Short recess, Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. I want to reconsider my earlier, I want to defer action on CB 20-151 to put on to the agenda.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that Congress reconsider the motion to defer to the next special session, CB, next session, CB number 20-154. Those in favor of the 151. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Both nay. Okay, the reconsideration is done. Okay, make your motion for passage.
I want to for passage on said bill.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading. CB number 20-154. Chief Clerk, read the title, if you have it.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 20-151. It's a bill for an act to amend Title 52 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated and as amended by adding a new section 212 to provide for eligibility for housing allowance for off-island recruits, for public service sector positions within the national government of the Federated States of Micronesia, and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Romolo, make motion.
I want to for passage on the first reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading. CB number 20-151. Okay, discussion.
Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa.
May I have the good chairman to explain the two things? Who's going to be eligible for this housing? How much it's going to cost this government? And so forth.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The employees that will be eligible for this amendment to the housing regulation is those that don't have a permanent legal residence at their, at the places of their work, which they are also, not within a commuting distance. And the financial impact, what the witnesses testify, that it will be an increase of about 50% of what we have within this current fiscal year, which is a little bit over 500,000. And added to that, it's about maybe 250 more. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Romolo. Is that.
Yeah, just one small follow-up question.
Go ahead.
That off-island recruit is eligible for housing.
That's true, Chairman Figueroa. The regulations that they are following now is that if even though you're from an off-island, who, from the other island or the other state, and you're here founding a job and hired here, then you consider local hire. But with this amendment, it will eliminate that local hire if you are not resident, have not, have no legal residence of that particular area.
Okay, check the, clear, Chairman Figueroa?
Speaker.
Continue, Chairman Figueroa. You still have the floor.
I just lost what I wanted to ask, but I'm, I'm not really comfortable with this change. I don't see any problem with the current law and housing regulations. So I may not be able to support the bill.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Figueroa.
Speaker.
Go ahead, you.
Maybe I did not elaborate more, but the current, the existing regulation now says if you're from Yap and you come here and you found a job here, you will not be eligible for housing because you will be considered local hire because you found a job here and applied and get a job. This amendment will do away with that because you're from Yap, you don't have a legal residence here in Ponte or in Chuk, or you're from another island, but found a job at the center and applied. So this is basically what this amendment is for. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Kooland, and then.
Thank you very much. If I can recall, somebody was walkout on my bill and I changed my mind. I alluded to my good chairman there. The personal office already describe who is, who are the eligibility for the housing allowance. It's not just that the bill was introduced and all the employee for the national government would be entitled to. It's already described in the personnel. So the only amendment on this, the local hire, any state aside from the national government or in Ponte, if they are entitled to the housing and hire here as a local hire, but in the category of the personnel would be justified who would be eligible for the housing.
Mr. Speaker.
Point of information.
Thank you, Chairman Kooland. Point of information.
For the.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to point out that one of the major obstacles to what Romolo has been trying to do is this pay level requirement. Because even if you are eligible for housing because you meet all these other requirements, but you don't reach pay level 26, you cannot get housing allowance. So I think that's one thing we have to also resolve.
That's a good concern. What, what say you, Chairman Romolo, to that? There is that limitation set by the pay level of the employee. Will that still apply?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, this bill, the amendment, doesn't change anything with the existing regulations and the requirements. It's just to add a provision to that regulation to, to away with the, the local hire that they are exercising. But everything remains except to insert this amendment.
Okay, Chairman Figueroa, you have the.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm still not, because once we do this, do away with the local hiring, then we are also doing away with the vetting, the qualification of that individual. Under the current system, the guy from Yap, when he applies for job, the people that look at the credential of the applicant make the decisions. But they can just get on the canoe and come here and get a job and get the, and then again, we will be filling this government with people who are not qualified to be in these positions and not have contribution that would impact the enhancement of the development of this government.
Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Figueroa. Chairman Romolo, you could to enlighten our manning.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, I, as I stated earlier, this amendment is not changing the existing policies or regulations regarding eligibility and criteria on what pay level they can and all the requirements. It's just that it, it eliminate that phrase where it says local hire. So it can also address those that have no means of finding a job besides going to the center and found a job and apply for it and get hired for that position. Because with what they're practicing now. Because with what they're practicing now, the existing regulation is that if you apply in Yap, but you're from Punta Bay, then you will be considered local hire, because you applied in Yap where the position will be, uh, at. So, again, there, there is not, this amendment, it doesn't make any, change anything within the existing regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, so the limitations on pay level, the limitations on commuting distance, those are still in place.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Speaker.
Chairman Vermin?
I'm not gonna touch the executive or justice, but legislative. That means if we pass this, Suda will lose his housing?
He already lost it, as far as I know, that's, that's what Secretary of Finance, uh, ruled.
Well, then I'll move to the previous question.
Very, smooth, uh, if there's no objection, uh, I would allow you, Chairman, one last, uh, discussion.
Yeah, I, I just hope that it's very clear what the bill is intending to do. Um, there are employees of the national government currently, uh, either here or elsewhere, who were brought here or brought to where they are now working, uh, and apply and got jobs. They meet the qualification for pay level. But because they apply and got the job here, they're considered local hire, as stated by the good chairman. Uh, this is what the bill is trying to do.
That's correct.
It, it's currently our regulation, and many times it's, uh, uh, it depends on who the person is, I guess. Uh, it's not being applied, uh, in accord, in accordance with the regulation. And there have been employees who are qualified for housing, are not getting housing. Uh, and there are employees who are not qualified for housing and are getting housing. So they are, what this bill is trying to do is to take out the unfairness in, in the practice, uh, by, I don't know, personnel or I remember, as a member of Congress, I used to write to presidents, former presidents about my housing, because the staff of the delegation office had government, uh, pay was, was paying for his house, and poor years through, he had to cough up money or stay in a condemned residence, because I wasn't eligible for housing. So, uh, uh, we changed that, and I, uh, become eligible thanks to that individual when he was, uh, president of the FSM. So this is not, uh, ruling out those that will qualify, are qualified to work for the national government, uh, to work. It's still, the hiring, uh, policy is still the same, it hasn't changed. But it's taking out the discretion of personnel to say, oh, you, you're from Ivaluca, and you come here and apply for work, local hire. That's not fair.
Exactly.
Now, if that individual has a, a parents here, or has a wife or something, and that wife or husband has house in Punta Bay, uh, then, of course, that person should not be eligible for housing.
Should not be eligible.
Should not be eligible.
Exactly. Okay, thank you very much, uh, there is a motion for previous question. Uh, is it, very, okay, make it quick.
Thank you, Speaker, just to make it clear on this one, I still confusing on the, on this one. I know that there is an existing regulation on the housing benefits. And the point that my good chairman was, uh, tried to, uh, ensure that in, is it the, uh, the point of hire contradicting to the, to the proposed bill that my good chairman was, uh, propose?
Okay, that's the question, uh, short recess, subject to call of the chair. We're back in session, uh, there's a motion for previous question, if there is no objection. Uh, debate is closed on the bill, so let's forward by roll call of members, first reading.
Senator Alik, Senator Aritos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Conman.
I yield to my good chairman of chair.
Floor leader Harper.
If it will help Romulo to gain more vote, of course, yes.
Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Ned. Senator Panuelo.
Yes.
Senator Panuelo, thank you. Senator Perman. Senator Romulo. Senator Orsma. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, twelve numbers voted for.
For that reason, CB number twenty dash one fifty-one has passed Congress on first reading, next bill.
Speaker, motion to stand and recess till month eight, ten AM.
Okay. It's move, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session, if there's no objection, we will, uh, go back to the standing committee report calendar. Next, uh, report, Chief Kirk.
Mr. Speaker, we have standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-three on Congressional Resolution twenty dash one thirty-three from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs for adoption.
Chairman Vermin?
So move for its adoption.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt the standing committee report twenty dash ninety-three, those in, uh, discussion?
Question.
Questions, we call for, if there's no objection, uh, discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-three, say yes. Both nay, motion carried, standing committee report twenty dash ninety-three is adopted, next report, Chief Kirk.
Mr. Speaker, we have standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-four on Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-four from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs.
So move for adoption.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-four, discussion?
Question.
Questions being called for, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-four, say yes. Both no, motion carried, standing committee report twenty dash ninety-four is adopted by Congress, next report.
Mr. Speaker, we have standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-six on Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-seven from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs.
Chairman Vermin?
So move for its adoption.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-six, discussion?
Question.
Those, uh, discussion, if there's no objection, uh, discussion is closed. So let's vote by those in favor of the adoption of standing committee report twenty dash ninety-six, say yes. Both nay, motion carried, standing committee report twenty dash ninety-six is adopted by Congress. Next report, Chief Kirk.
Mr. Speaker, formal reports, we have an awaiting list number twenty dash forty-four.
Okay.
Speaker.
Chairman Orsma.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I move to withdraw, I move to place standing committee reports number twenty dash ninety-seven and twenty dash ninety-eight on today's calendar for action.
It's move and seconded that, uh, standing committee reports number twenty dash ninety-seven and twenty dash ninety-eight be placed on the calendar for action, uh, the relevant rules are still suspended at this point. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Both no, motion carried, those reports are now placed.
Speaker.
Chairman Vermin?
Yeah, I also like to make a motion to withdraw and place standing committee report twenty dash one hundred on our standing committee report calendar.
It's move and seconded that, uh, standing committee report number twenty dash one hundred be placed on the calendar for action, those in favor of the motion, say yes. Both no, motion carried. Standing committee report twenty dash one hundred is also placed, so Chairman Orsma, you first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I move that standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-seven be adopted.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-seven, discussion? Any discussion, questions being called for, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of standing committee report twenty dash ninety-seven, say yes. Both nay, motion carried, the report is adopted, next report, Chairman Orsma.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I move that standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-eight be adopted.
Any second, move and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash ninety-eight, discussion? Any discussion, if none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-eight, say yes. Both nay, motion carried, standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-eight is adopted by Congress. Next report, Chairman Vermin?
Thank you, Speaker, motion to adopt twenty dash one hundred.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number twenty dash one hundred, discussion? Any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called for, if there's no objection, debate is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of standing committee report number twenty dash one hundred, say yes. Both no, motion carried, standing committee report number twenty dash one hundred is adopted by Congress. Next report, Chief Kirk.
We still have the, the waiting list twenty dash forty-four.
Okay, there is no more on that, take note of the awaiting list, okay? There's no objection, we should now, we're now down to the resolution calendar. First, resolution.
Mr. Speaker, the first resolution is, uh, Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-four CD one for adoption from your Committee on Education. CR number twenty dash one twenty-four CD one is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of nine hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars from the U.S. Department of Education Division of Special Education Program for the Federal Fiscal Year two thousand eighteen fund under Part B of the Individual with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Orsma.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I saw move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-four CD one, discussion? Any discussion? Chairman, uh, Figuerre?
Just wondering if members of Congress are eligible for this grant.
Okay, are we eligible as members of Congress?
I, I'm afraid not, Mr. Speaker, the age requirement is only for, uh, I believe, uh, from zero to twenty-one.
Okay, there you have it.
I think most of us are over that, the twenty-one age, so we can, we cannot be eligible.
Thank you, there is a motion for, uh, closing the debate, if there's no objection, uh, debate is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-four CD one, say yes. Both nay, motion carried, Resolution twenty dash one twenty-four CD one has passed Congress, has been adopted by Congress, next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have standing, I mean, Congressional Resolution number twenty dash eighty-seven CD one for adoption from your Committee on RND, CR number twenty dash eighty-seven CD one. It's a resolution approving and adopting the Protected Areas Network National Guiding Policy Framework for the national government of the Federated States of Micronesia.
Chairman Panuelo?
Yeah, Speaker, so move for the adoption of said resolution.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash eighty-seven CD one, discussion? Any discussion, if there is none, there's no objection, debate will be closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty dash eighty-seven CD one, say yes. Both no, motion carried, Resolution number twenty dash eighty-seven CD one is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, sorry. Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-seven for adoption from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs, CR number twenty dash one twenty-seven is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of nine hundred fifty thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration to support the project entitled AFSM Department of Health and Social Affairs SPF dash BFS project.
So move for its adoption.
It's move, uh, by Chairman Vermin, and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-seven, discussion? No discussion, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-seven, say yes.
Yes.
Both nay, motion carried, Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-seven is adopted by Congress, next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-nine for adoption from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs, CR number twenty dash one twenty-nine. It's a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Services Administration to fund the FSM maternal and child health program, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Okay, Chairman Vermin?
Motion to adopt said resolution.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-nine, discussion? Any discussion, if none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-nine, say yes. Both nay, motion carried, Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-nine is adopted by Congress, next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one thirty for adoption from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs. CR number twenty dash one thirty is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of hundred forty-seven thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Services Administration to fund the FSM maternal and child health program in the FSM, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Vermin?
So move for its adoption.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one thirty, uh, discussion?
Question.
Questions being called for, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty dash one three zero, say yes.
Yes.
Both nay, motion carried, Resolution number twenty dash one thirty is adopted by Congress, next resolution.
Boy of privilege, Mr. Speaker.
State your point, uh, Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I'm not trying to rush our meeting for a chairman for the day, but I just want to remind us that people can die from hypoglycemia, that's low blood sugar.
Okay, get some sugar to Floor Leader Harper, staff, page.
Cookies, cookies.
Cookies, okay, next resolution, Chief Kirk.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one hundred thirty-one for adoption from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs. CR number twenty dash one thirty-one is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of six hundred ninety-three thousand nine, nine hundred seventy dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to fund and support the FSM Public Health and Healthcare Emergency Prepartness Project, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Vermin?
So move for its adoption. So move for its adoption.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-one, discussion?
Question.
Questions being called for, if there is no objection, debate is closed, so let's vote those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-one, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carried, Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-one is adopted by Congress, next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one hundred thirty-three for adoption from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs, CR number twenty dash one thirty-three is a resolution approving and accepting a grant from the United Nations Development Program, or UNDP, in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars to fund and support the global fund project for HIV, HIV-TB in the FSM, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Okay, Chairman Perman.
So move for its adoption.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-three, discussion?
Question.
Questions being called for, if there is no objection, debate is closed, so let's vote those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-three, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, nay, motion carried, Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-three is adopted by Congress, next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-four for adoption from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs, CR number twenty dash one thirty-four is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of under sixty thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Health and Resources and Services Administration to fund the universal newborn hearing screening and intervention project in the FSM, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Perman.
Motion to adopt said resolution.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-four, discussion?
Question.
Questions being called for, if there is no objection, debate is closed, so let's vote those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-four, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carried, Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-four is adopted by Congress, next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-seven for adoption from your Committee on Health and Social Affairs, CR number twenty dash one thirty-seven is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of six hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration to provide funding to the Federated States of Micronesia Department of Health and Social Affairs for Prevention and Treatment Services related to substance abuse for the budget period from October first two thousand eighteen to September thirty two thousand nineteen, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Perman.
Motion to adopt said resolution.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-seven, discussion?
Question.
Any discussion? Questions being called for, if there is no objection, discussion is closed, so let's vote those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-seven, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carried, Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-seven is adopted by Congress, next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-one for adoption from your Committee on Education, CR number twenty dash one twenty-one is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Jesse John Salalu to serve as a member of the Port of Regents for the College of Micronesia FSM, representing the state of Yap.
Speaker.
Uh, Floor Leader Harper.
Yeah, I just want to ask whether we're ready to really act on this resolution, because I'm afraid those who are really concerned about Johnny Boy might retaliate on this resolution.
It's like comparing apples and oranges, so I don't think that would, that is a different thing. Chairman Orsma?
Yeah.
You're staring at me.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've already zipped through the other resolutions, so I'm hoping that the same bird that is helping us with the grants will continue to help our decisions on the next two resolutions.
Of course, okay, let's go, next resolution. Oh, already, discussion.
Move for the adoption of the resolution, Mr. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-one, discussion? If there is no objection, discussion is closed, so this nomination, it requires ten, at least ten votes, we will be voting by secret ballot, so short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session, announce the result, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, eight members voted in favor, four against.
Okay, the resolution is not adopted, meaning the nomination is not confirmed. Okay, next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-six for adoption from your Committee on Education, CR number twenty dash one twenty-six is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Dulensru Iwakuk to serve as a member of the Port of Regents for the College of Micronesia, Federated States of Micronesia, representing the state of Koshai.
Okay, Chairman Orsma.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I guess when, in that, in the Bible where it says, if someone slap your right cheek, turn the other, the left cheek, and I just learned that lesson during the deliberate, the vote on the resolution, but I hope, and really hope, that this one, the next one, the one we're considering, will be adopted, so I shall move for the confirmation of the nomination resolution.
Point of privilege, Mr. Speaker.
It's seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-six, yes, state your point.
Uh, Speaker, I just want to say that our Excellency Peter Christian has done delivering his speech in the U.N.
Okay, I hope he wasn't following Trump, or he was before or after, okay? I hope they, they're not laughing at him, but with him, that's there, okay? We are in discussion of the resolution. Questions being called for, if there is no objection, discussion is closed, so let's vote by secret ballot, this nomination requires also ten votes, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session, Chief Clerk, announce the results.
Mr. Speaker, nine members voted in affirmative, three against.
For that reason, nomination, resolution for Mr. Wakuk is not adopted, so it's not, is not confirmed, yes, Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-six is not adopted, so Mr. Wakuk is not confirmed. Next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-six for adoption from your Committee on Health, Health and Social Affairs, CR number twenty dash one thirty-six is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of one million four hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred seven dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Okay, Chairman Perman.
Motion to adopt said resolution.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-one. Discussion?
Question.
Questions we call for, if there is no objection, discussion is closed, so let's vote on Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-six, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's not one thirty-one, it's one thirty-six. Okay, let's vote those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-six, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, nay, motion carried, Resolution number twenty dash one thirty-six is adopted by Congress, next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, there are none.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session, Vice Speaker Moses, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, I, I volunteered to do this because the college is going through reviews constantly, and we need their Regents constituted, so I would like to ask some members if they could seriously reconsider their vote, so I hereby move that Congress reconsider Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-one.
Okay, one second, it's moved and seconded that Congress reconsider its action on Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-one, that will require the same number of votes and will be by secret ballot also, and short recess, subject to call of the chair. In session, Chief Clerk, announce the result.
For reconsideration of CR twenty dash one twenty-one, eleven members voted in favor, one against.
Okay, for that reason, our action on Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-one has been reconsidered, so resolution itself, Chief Clerk.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, we have now CR number twenty dash one twenty-one for adoption.
Okay, Chairman, I mean, Vice Speaker Moses.
So move to adopt, consider, Congress, to adopt Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-one.
Second. It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-one. This is a resolution for the nomination, and it will take ten votes and by secret ballot, so please, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session, Chief Clerk, announce the result on the resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have ten members voted for, two against.
For that reason, Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-one is adopted by Congress, Mr. Salalu is confirmed as a member of the Port of Regents of our college. Vice Speaker Moses.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, again, on the same, same request, I wish to, that Congress reconsider Congressional Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-six.
Second. It's moved and seconded that Congress reconsider its action on Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-six, so manner of voting is the same, so short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session, Chief Clerk, announce the results.
For reconsideration, Mr. Speaker, eight members voted yes for no's.
Wow.
For that reason, the reconsideration of Resolution number twenty dash one twenty-six is not adopted, next resolution.
Motion to stand and recess till Monday ten AM.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session, there is a motion, it's been seconded, that Congress stands in recess until Monday, those in favor of that motion, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, nay, motion carried, Congress now stands in recess until Monday at ten PM, ten AM.